Welcome everyone to the Owensboro Board of Commissioners Special Called Meeting Work Session, May the 11th, 2021. At this time, we ask the, you don't have to call to order, y'all. I don't care who's up here. Alright, okay. First item on the agenda is Owensboro Sister Cities and Regions Discussion, Michael Vanover President. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, City Commissioners and Mayor. My name is Michael Vanover. I'm the President of Owensboro Sister Cities and Regions. My home address is 3307 Shade Wood Terrace, Owensboro, Kentucky, 42303. Well, I took some time to kind of give you a, I'm a simple guy, so I took some time and kind of put together a one pager for the Commission to review. This kind of gives a little bit of nuts and bolts to who we are and what our duties are. Also, attached with that is a supplemental that goes a little bit deeper, if you care to read that. But I'd first like to draw everyone's attention to the Statement of Purpose. Owensboro Sister Cities and Regions encourages global understanding between our community, including Davis County, other local communities outside of the city of Owensboro, and other world communities. Oscar will assist government entities with the proper reception of foreign visitors and dignitaries by serving as the community's Office of Protocol. Pursue an ongoing mission to inform and educate our community concerning our areas' international, cultural, and business ties, and their effects on our community. Initiate exchange programs in education, business professional groups, and the arts. Assist government and its agencies in promoting our community's cultural heritage through our sister cities' relationships. Encourage development and expansion of international trade relationships, and assist with foreign trade missions. Assist community organizations in direct relationships with similar organizations in our sister cities and elsewhere in the world where possible. Plainly put, Sister Cities and Regions does not have the responsibility of creating economic development. As an entity, we were designed for a different purpose in mind. Certainly a different purpose than what the President Eisenhower founder had in mind when this was created. From our standpoint, business development is something that we take lead from the city commission, county officials, whoever the governing local body is, in league with the Economic Development Corporation. The EDC, along and in league with local government officials, decides where the economic development needs to be, what the focus is, what the interests are, and then they look to Owensboro Sister Cities and Regions to help put those elements to work. If you, if you take some time to read the Statement of Purpose, it's in our bylaws, you'll find that there's a lot that we do. And economic development comes in many different ways and forms. There are a lot of cities, a lot of communities in Kentucky who have sister cities, at least one. I've provided a list on the page as well. In terms of our budget, I'm probably a little biased, but I believe for the line item that we represent, we deliver a return to local government that far exceeds that same dollar for dollar spent with most agencies and entities. I feel that strongly about it. And I also feel like that local government and the EDC could use us more. We're at the service of local government. We were created by local government, and we're here to help develop a wide variety of connections between ourselves and our sister cities, and it goes well beyond economic development. That's certainly something that we all strive for, some more than others, but it really doesn't tie in well with why Sister Cities was created in the first place, why Sister Cities International was designed by President Eisenhower. And now it's in over 150 countries worldwide. And you know, the last segment on the page really kind of gives you a sense of where President Eisenhower stood in this matter, and that it's all about citizen diplomacy, and working together, and developing what I call the three Cs: communication, cooperation, and collaboration. And these are all elements that are available to us. And I've spoken to the EDC about economic development. I've spoken to a board member who serves on the EDC, who works for the EDC, and she kind of feels the same way that I do, and frankly, most of the board does, that the economic development is possible. It is out there. But it's going to take a larger commitment from the governing body in the way of money and time. And so, we're there to maximize the use of our line item to the best of our ability, but we could do a lot more if the city governing body, the county, whoever that local governing body is, in league with the EDC, gives us the direction. And so, that's really where, characteristically, we're supposed to get our direction from, is decisions made in league between governing officials and the EDC. Our relationship with Olamoots is fantastic on many levels, and I would encourage the city commission and the mayor to take a trip there. It's a wonderful experience. That city has a lot to offer us, and we have a lot in common with them. This city, you know, Owensboro was founded in 1800. This city was founded in the 7th century, and has had inhabitants there since 3500 B.C. Their education is phenomenal, and they have a lot of the same manufacturing and agricultural components that we do. There's a lot of similarity. I think there's some opportunity there. I think there's some opportunity with our sister city in Japan. We're reviving that since its temporary suspension, and that was due, and that suspension goes hand in hand with the culture of the Japanese people. It's not our culture. That relationship was temporarily suspended in 2011 with the onset of the earthquake tsunami that followed, and the Fukushima nuclear disaster. All of that in hand, our Japanese counterparts told us they had some other things they had to take care of, and we understood that. We've now since been in conversations internally about ways that we can, in the interim, get a relationship back on that track that it once was when it was founded back in 2006. And so, back then, the mayor there was a different kind of mayor. Mayor Sago was a great mayor to work with. But as with that, with all administrations, that administration changed, and our channel of communication was disrupted. And then with the disasters that took place, it's taken some time to get back on track, but now we're heading on the right path. And we've got a couple of different proposals that we've been reviewing, and in fact, the sister city Nishin agenda, I mean, conversation or topic or subject is on our agenda for this next meeting, because we have some ideas about how to utilize the small line item that we get for that, for that relationship. But again, we're always interested in taking direction from the governing body and the EDC about how to best use those funds. Right now, we're kind of building it up, because I think it's about $2,200. We're building it up for a special project that we would like to do, but we're still in the throes of the details of that. And it will likely involve another agency here locally, because that's one of the things that we do, is we partner up with other agencies to help promote our culture and the cultures of our sister cities. So, it's going to, you know, it's taking a little bit of time to work up to a usable budget, you know, given the line amount. So, we're still moving forward with that, with these project ideas, but financially, we're not really there yet. So, it remains, you know, it remains a subject of action and intense debate on how to best use those funds. But once again, we ask that more direction come from the EDC in league with governing officials, because we're here to serve in that respect. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions from the DIAS? Commissioner Glenn?
So, the one question I've got is, you didn't mention the word, we're all on the tip of our consciousness, and that's COVID. So, how is COVID affected, over there? Like, I know Karen Campbell, she's gone over and taught a language school. I don't even know if she can go over there.
Yeah, she can't. We've been, we've been kind of hamstrung with our exchange work, and that's been evident with the firefighter exchange that we're developing, with the scouting exchange that we're working on, with the governing body. We're working and speaking with official, local officials over there about paying us a visit, and we're also talking about a visit from our local officials. It's all a problem now. And it's, on the one hand, it's allowed us to create budgets where there never was one. But we're kind of on hold with some of the things that we want to advance because of the pandemic. So, a lot of it, especially on the international level, is very up in the air right now. There's a lot of uncertainty. And so, we continue to move forward in the hopes that things will change, things will get better. We believe they will. But in the meantime, we're using elements like Zoom to do some video chatting and keep those juices flowing, you know. It's not the same as a personal visit. You certainly don't get out of it what you would under normal circumstances, but it, you know, it keeps those channels of communication open. It allows free thinking and, you know, and discussion to continue. And that's what's vital, is that we keep the discussion going. But we've got a lot of big plans that are lined up for when this all clears a little bit more. We're just kind of chomping at the bit.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Vanover, what is y'all's bank balance at this time? Do you have an estimate?
I'd have to check on the exact figure, but I want to say about $27,000.
How long have you been on the board?
I've been on the board since 2011.
Okay. When was the last time Sister Cities gave a presentation to the Commission like this? I mean, this is, really, you've done a great job. I mean, to inform us, you know, I hate that you had to get in the paper to stir it all up again, but that's fine. I'm a big boy. But have you all ever done a presentation to the Commission such as this to update what's going on?
We have. We have not during this particular group of officials. We did when Mayor Payne was in office. That's been the last time.
Alright. The discussion that came about was particularly, and it's probably just the way we do it, we have one check we send from finance for the whole, basically, the check and for the Japanese.
Nishin?
You know, yeah, Nishin City. We chose that when I was here, whenever that was, I don't know what time, what year it was, but because of its location, close to Toyota City, with all the manufacturing that's done in the Commonwealth, we thought that would be a good play. And I certainly understand, change of leadership, change of ideas, change of plans, no question about that. Just for your own reference, the city has basically sponsored Sister Cities funding since 96 at $198,000. So, we have an investment in, no question about it. Not saying you're not using the funds properly, but people want, you know, taxpayers need to know, this is their money, it's not my money. And so, I had our crack staff and get some information so I could at least talk somewhat intelligently. And since 20, I put $25,000, $2,500 in it for us to go over and receive their key to their city so that we could be partners. We spent $2,500. And then back in 2008, we started funding the Nishin folks at two grand, and then it's, you know, incrementally went up, and I think this year's budget's $2279. But all those years, that money's been just folded into the Czech Republic with no real thought process, as far as I'm concerned, and I wasn't here all this time, so, of what, how we continue that process. So, I'm saying that you've been not only getting your check funding, check, no check, and the Japanese funding together with, and that's what I, that was my concern. Do we look at breaking you back to just your check stuff, or do we move forward with something with the Japanese Sister City process? So, that was the whole idea of this discussion. Not that you've done anything wrong, but just where are our tax dollars and what are they trying to do? That's our fiduciary responsibility. I know that in '13, there was the mayor Payne, and Ms. Payne went, and the mayor pro tem, and went. And '14, Heath and Molly went. And '16, Leslie Neely went to DC for a conference. And in November of '16, Leslie, the, I guess she was the secretary here, went to the Czech Republic themselves, and all that money was paid for by taxpayer dollars, you know. So, I just, just kind of looking at what we're doing, and how do we make it grow for more money for you and more benefit for the city? That's the whole discussion that was brought up in the budget. So, I appreciate your report, very well done, and.
Thank you.
We'll continue to have chats about it amongst ourselves.
We'd love to get some more, some more direction from the city and the EDC on how to best proceed with that. I mean, we have some ideas, and we would love to sit down and talk about those opportunities and how they, how they may exist. And it's very possible that the Economic Development Corporation might be working on some things already. We felt it was necessary to recruit someone from the EDC to work with us, because it is important to us.
Well, I'm on that board as well, and I've not heard this word, these words, ever, which is bad. You know, it goes into the same scenario that we ought to be working together to try and do something.
Yeah, this is a conversation.
We didn't choose the Czech Republic out of, just out of the air. There are so, a lot of similarities, you know. And I know at one time, we talked, there are some restrictions on our bourbon industry over there and vice versa, so I understand. More than I look like I understand about Sister Cities. I would have loved to gone to Japan, but I'd had my knee replaced, and doctor wouldn't let me go, so I picked somebody else to go on our place for the city. So, I appreciate your report, and we'll be glad to, you know, help you in any way we can. And you help yourself as well.
Alright, absolutely. I'll be following up.
Just one more question, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Castle.
Yeah, I was wondering, how do you guys go about picking the groups and what you're going to do in any particular year? Is that done by your board, or who exactly makes those decisions?
Well, yes, sir. It is, it's done in league between the board, when it comes to exchanges, between the board and our sister city officials that we work with. We talk about different opportunities to showcase culture, to develop bigger collaborative exchanges. We always say the more the merrier. But yeah, it's typically done between our board and our counterparts, you know, in cooperation with each other. But we're also, we're also eager to get direction from the city on that as well.
What was your objective going to be, or your goals for the firefighters? That was proposed last year. Is that still in line for the future, or?
Yes, sir. We still intend to move forward with that exchange, and we think that our fire departments will gain a lot from it. And we have, we have a number of firefighters here that are, that are already, that have already shown a great interest in going and experiencing that.
I just, I don't know. I just don't see how our firefighters could benefit from it as much, since we, you know, are the leader in technology of the world. Now, I'm sure the Czech Republic could probably pick up some pointers, but I'm, and I don't mean to sound greedy, but I would like to see the people of Owensboro benefit from this program also.
Oh, they do, Commissioner. I can assure you that. There are hundreds of families that are in Owensboro and Davis County that have benefited from these exchanges. And they're, and they're all, they're across all walks of life. And it's not just, it's not just the students, it's the adults too. Because when it comes to these types of exchanges, our commission doesn't pay for that. We don't have the budget for that. These trips that are planned, when it comes to the funding for them, that funding is generated by those who go. I've, you know, I've, in 10, in 10 years on the board, I've, I've been over there once because my, you know, my, my work life is busy. But I certainly didn't expect the board to pay for it, and they didn't. And none of the students, all the students who go, they pay for it themselves. The schools raise money, they do fundraisers, the parents come up with the funds. You know, they, they go about their means of trying to create enough money to pay for those tickets, and maybe some personal money for spending. And then, as far as a place to stay, our folks over there that want to get involved, they, they are the hosts. And so, yeah, all these, all these people stay with others that live there, and that's what's so beautiful about these exchange programs, is the intimacy between our cultures. And I submit, there's a lot to be learned that you just, you don't find in an instruction manual or in a book. And I think that they have a lot to offer us, and in probably in ways that we don't even know about. And, but ultimately, it's about bringing communities together. And this type of exchange where you're dealing with first responders, you know, in my book, The Cream of the Crop, that kind of interaction, I think is just going to be tremendous, and it's going to lead to other things. Other exchanges that we've done in the past have done that. They've led to other things, bigger things. But I totally understand where you're coming from. I think that's part of the misconception, is that a lot of the, a lot of the funding that goes on for these trips is created by those who go, not by the board. We just simply don't have that kind of funding. We, if we've got somebody who's taking a high school group over there, and they're not a board member, they're a chaperone, then we'll help with that transportation. A lot of, a lot of the rest is all created by those who participate.
Okay. Commissioner Sanford?
Yes, Michael. Just a couple of quick questions. How often do you guys review who we're going to be sister cities with, as far as economies change worldwide, changes locally, and it's more of an economic match? How often do you guys review? I know what you've said, we've, and the second question, when's the last time someone's been to Japan? Was it back when you were mayor before? So, since then, there's been nobody go to Japan? Then why are we still with Japan? So, since then, there's been nobody go to Ja- then why are we still with Japan?
That's a good question, uh, it really is. Uh, you know, when two thousand and eleven hit, uh, for them over there, you know, it was a disaster on a lot of different levels, and they, they wanted to suspend everything, um, because they had to get their house in order. Um, a- again, that kinda falls back on the culture that they have. Um, but, uh, that was one of the first things that, that I thought about was how do we turn this relationship in a different direction? And we've made some progress. Um, I suspect that within the next probably three to six months, we're gonna know a lot more than we know now. It's just taken some time due to what's happened over there. Um, but, when it comes to deciding Sister Cities, um, again, that's, that's something that we typically wanna work in league with city official, city or county officials and the EDC, um, because we're taking a lot of our direction from, from that combined entity.
Because when I look at our, you know, locally, agriculture comes to mind, you've mentioned distillery, uh, aluminum, stuff like that, that, uh, finance, uh, that we're strong, and we're very diversified here in Owensboro. I just think there probably could be some other opportunities out there that may need to be discussed.
I think so too.
Since, if nobody's been there since two thousand and eleven, that's a lo- I mean, that's a long time, and resources could be put somewhere else.
Yeah, it's hard to, uh, you know, I, twenty, twenty-two hundred dollars will get you a round trip ticket to Tokyo, but it won't get you to Nishin. And, so if, if we're going to make a trip over there, uh, you know, you, the, the budget obviously has to be a little bit bigger. Um, and from, from our, from my, I guess my own standpoint, um, there, there are things that we can do with, to help strengthen that Japanese relationship. But I also believe that, and there's, and there's some good to come from it, there's no doubt in my mind about that, uh, and other board members will tell you the same thing, but I've always thought of increasing our Sister Cities numbers. Instead of, instead of losing a relationship that we've been trying to build, let's start another one. Uh, and I, and we've had, that's in, in discussion too, about places in our own, on our own continent that could be attractive to the city for, for, for a variety of reasons, economic development being one of them. Uh, and we have some ideas about who we could talk to with, with regards to Sister City relationship, be it Canada or Mexico. Um, but again, we'd like to review those options with the city commission and the EDC to, to see if we're on the right track.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Is that it?
I've got one more question to ask him, take two seconds. Don't we have a diplomatic agreement though, like a contract with these cities? And how long does the one in Nishan, it, I mean, uh, it's still ongoing, does it have an expiration date?
I'm not aware of any. Um, I'd have to check that though to be a hundred percent.
I know there's an agreement.
Yes, there is.
You know, today we're Sister Cities, tomorrow we're side that.
Right, officials got together and signed documents and, yes, there, yeah, that, that all took place with both cities.
And we well wanna just reneg on that without...
Absolutely. Absolutely.
That was my question, thank you, sir.
We do get a Christmas card, don't we, Adrian, each year, and, uh, from them and, um...
That's great, because last year we weren't get, we didn't get one, I think.
We got a big ol' calendar.
Like a couple of years ago, a couple of years ago, we just...
There is a contract, that's why Dale Taylor went over for us to complete the transaction. Thank you, sir, appreciate you, good luck to you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, oops.
Are these working?
Okay. Is the popular finance report fiscal year June thirty, twenty twenty. Ms. Wanniger, Director of Finance and Support Services. Huh? Yeah, I think I hear that, I thought you said it, but... L-A-T-E-O-T. Yeah, there's something like that.
Working?
Um, we're gonna work on getting it on, and, uh, my introductory comments, uh, were gonna actually be prior to the slide presentation. So if it's okay with you all, um, I'll go ahead and get started, uh, with the narrative, um, while we work on getting the slides up. Uh, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, and viewing audience. This is the city's third popular annual financial report, also referred to as the PAFR. This report serves two purposes. One is to fulfill the OB KY recommendation for making two annual reports regarding the financial status of the city available to our community. And two was a recommendation by City Manager Pagan to fulfill part of the OB KY reporting recommendation, that we could do that in the form of the PAFR, which is an awards program established by the Government Financial Officers Association, or the GFOA. By participating in the GFOA program, not only do we receive national accolades, also, but we also garner input and advice from the GFOA reviewers and staff on how to provide the best document possible for our public. So if we can look at slide number one, if it's up. Oh, okay. But would you, uh, but you all have a copy of, uh, the PAFR in front of you? Do you want me to, or continue? It, it does, it, it has, uh, opening remark, uh, remarks from our city manager, and it also has your picture and their mayor and, uh, the elected officials for, uh, for that fiscal year. So, um, I'll just go on and, and continue, um, speaking. If anyone else wants, here in the room wants a copy of the PAFR, just let me know, I brought up some, some extras. Um, so the city received the GFOA award for its first two PAFRs. We have submitted our third PAFR, which is dated June thirty, twenty twenty, to the GFOA for award consideration. The preparation and release of this report was delayed due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So the first slide is just a picture of the front cover, um, of our booklet. Our second slide, uh, is an example of what you find in the PAFR on page six. I'll give everyone a moment to flip to that page. So the slide was actually a picture, um, of the pie that we see there, the general fund expenditures by expense type. They say a picture is worth a thousand words. This picture reflects the general fund expenditures for the fiscal year. As you can see, the blue area, which represents salaries and benefits, is fifty percent of all general fund expenditures. Benefits include employee-related expenses such as payroll taxes, health insurance, and pension. Please note in the sub-pie picture there, that seventy-three percent of that fifty percent is dedicated to public safety. The city is in the business of providing services to our residents with public safety as our priority, so that's why you see what you see for expenditures and its dedication to personnel. You can also see at a glance the other categories of expenditures in this pie. Two of these categories, namely agencies and operating transfers, are broken down into more detail within the PAFR on another page. Should the reader want more information, they may find it on the city's, uh, in the city's comprehensive annual financial report, which can be found on the city's website. Our third slide, which is also page seven, I believe, in our book, is the accolades. This slide is a snapshot of the accolades that our city has received over the years. It's a good reminder to our local readers, as well as a good opportunity to rack ourselves up to those readers, not from our local area, of the independent recognitions that our city has had the privilege to receive. Our fourth slide is a conversation, um, actually pictures of our, um, annual budget, our audit, and our PAFR, uh, just pictures of the front covers for different years wherein we have, uh, received an award. The other information in our PAFR includes different types of financial reports that the city has been nationally recognized for via awards received by the GFOA. This is important for more than one reason. Rating agencies such as Moody's and Standard and Poor's look for this as a measure of the city's financial position in reporting, as well as other features that a city has to offer. Not only that, but businesses and investors also look to these documents and the related awards for information on a good potential place to be. We have received the distinguished budget presentation award twenty-one times, and the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting thirty-nine times. Slide number five is a brief, uh, picture of some of our items of interest. You will find in the PAFR two full pages dedicated, uh, to that. What this represents is our projects and events of notoriety. This year, we highlight the bridge lighting, our new pickleball courts, the playground replacements at Dugan Best and Thompson Berry Parks, our healthy-at-home fireworks, our beautiful Gold Star Monument, and the Jack C. Fisher Park softball complex renovations. So if you would refer to that, you'll see a, a brief narrative outlining those projects and, and what they mean to our community. That's it for my PowerPoint presentation, but it's not it for my narrative. There's more information in our PAFR. Today, I touched on just a portion of it. I encourage anyone who would like a quick and easy read about our city, its financial position, and various interesting facts to check it out. We are open to suggestions on items to include in future PAFRs. Our PAFRs are available on the city's website, also on our Facebook page. One may also obtain a hard copy at City Hall. I would like to publicly acknowledge and thank Felicia Wimsit for formatting and organizing this document. And also, I'd like to thank Nate Pagan, Leland Hancock, and Beth Davis for their input and oversight. And if I may, I have something on a related topic I'd like to update the commission on. The GFOA has requested that we no longer use the four-letter acronym associated with the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is the report that we build our PAFR from. So instead of using the acronym, C-A-F-R, or saying CAFR, we cannot say it or spell it, the GFOA asks that we refer to the report by either the full name, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or a shortened version such as the annual report. You may ask the reason for this. The recommendation from GFOA is the result of increasing professional awareness that this acronym, when pronounced aloud, sounds the same as a derogatory term historically used in other parts of the world as a racial slur. So I just wanted to share that with you all, that's not a term that we should be using per the GFOA's request. And that concludes my presentation. I apologize for the technical difficulties. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer.
And just to have one question and then a recommendation for future reports, I'll do the future reports, I don't forget. More employees, I'd like to see more employees, like the winner of our Employee of the Year award, why aren't they on here?
That, that's, that's a good suggestion, we can put that on there.
Why are you not on here with all the great work you've done? Why is Leland not on here? I'd like to see more of our boards.
Uh, we are, you...
I know this is a future thing, but I just...
The staff is, um, on there, um, Commissioner, if you, we'll go to page number two. Um, we have a picture of each of the elected officials with their name, and then the administrative staff, um, in smaller print is listed there, um, and I think it's an excellent idea to put the cap, are you talking about the Cap Gardner Award?
Yes, yeah, I couldn't remember the name of the award, yeah.
Certainly.
Cap Gardner, yeah.
No, no, that, that's a good suggestion, and we can look to add that.
Yeah, I'd just like to see more of our, you know, hard-working sanitation folks, you know, police officers, et cetera. Okay, so my question is, in our budget, when you go to the pie chart, just real quick, for the purposes of, of our citizens, in the pie chart, we have eight percent for other. So other is just sort of a catch-all, or what, what would normally go under the heading of other? Does it represent eight percent of the budget?
Uh, some of it's gonna be outside services, um, miscellaneous, uh, fairview drive, extension. It's gonna be things that don't fit in these other categories. If you want a detail list, I can get that for you.
Uh, at a later time on your own, yeah, but don't worry about it now, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your excellent work.
Thank you.
I wanna thank you too, 'cause this was, come, came about for, as a budget for dummies, remember that? And, uh, OB KY, I was, uh, included in that remark. So, uh, yeah, and people request this, I mean, this is pretty handy and kept, instead of that thing and trying to fight through the, I know it's printing and that's old-school, but it's very nicely done.
We go through several, uh, down in the lobby. Felicia does a very good job of keeping them stocked up down there, and she, they cycle through them on a fairly regular basis. And, uh, and so, you know, I mentioned one of two reports that the OB KY recommendation was. This one is the actuals from the audit, and then we also do one from the budget. So you'll see one rolling out in the not-too-far future, um, in the same similar format, compiling our budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mayor.
All right, I, after no other discussion, I'll move to the city project list, City Manager Nate Pagan, please.
Yes, sir, afternoon, Mayor and everyone. Um, the project list is in there, in your packet every month for a work session, and I've been emailing it monthly since we've not been having work sessions because of COVID. And it's informational, so it just provides an update, as, as you would imagine, on the various projects or initiatives that may be ongoing. So I hope you've had an opportunity to review that, and, and the various staff members who have projects on there are here, or I'll answer those if possible as well, if, should you have any questions or request additional information.
Mr. Sanford.
Quick question.
Sure.
Looking at the bridge, people ask me about bridge lights. We talk about it, but for the public.
Yeah, and I, I believe that, uh, Leland, correct me if I'm wrong, it's scheduled to be repaired next week? The week of the seventeenth? I believe it is, yeah.
How long, how long are we under warranty with them?
It's additional one year.
Yeah. People have asked, and I don't know what to tell them. I don't think it's been started.
Okay. But from the time the activation begins, it would be a one-year warranty period.
Okay.
Are these listed in any priority, or are they listed in alphabetical order?
Alphabetical.
Alphabetical order, okay. I have no questions, I don't know about the rest of it. Been so long since we had one of these, it's kinda hard to get back in the swing of things. Okay. No other business before this group? Oh, do we have slides? There you go. We got slides. Angela, would you go over the thing again?
Sure, I, I, I mean, I can flip through the slides if you want, but, yeah.
Okay, hearing no more business before this, well, I'll adjourn this meeting, thank you.